Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council for the City of Thousand Oaks, City Council and Redevelopment Agency, Tuesday, January 26, 2010. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order, and we will have our flag presentation by Boy Scout, Weblos, Den 10, and the Pledge of Allegiance.
All those in uniform salute the flag. All others put your right hand over your heart. Color Guard, advance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color Guard, post the colors. Color Guard, salute. Color Guard, dismissed.
The city clerk, please call or roll.
Councilmember Bill de la Peña is absent this evening. Councilmember Irwin?
Here.
Councilmember Glancy?
Here.
Councilmember Fox?
Here.
Mayor Gillette?
Item four, requests for continuance of any public hearing. Our agenda item, we have none. At this time, I'd like to ask Carol Neswam to come to the podium. Carol is the president and CEO of Cabrillo Music Theater, our resident musical production company. This award-winning organization brings our theater stellar performances throughout the year. At a December council meeting, our audience enjoyed a song from Irving Berlin's "White Christmas," and tonight, I know you brought us another great preview. Let me take a moment, Carol, and congratulate you on being named one of the finalists for the Creative Director of the Year 2010 Event Solutions Spotlight Award. Well-deserved honor, Carol.
Thank you.
It's all yours. Take it over.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, esteemed council members, and fabulous city staff, and a special thank you to Mary Leck, our technical director here in City Hall. We'd like to also thank our mayor and the city council members for their support of "White Christmas." It was a big hit. We had nearly 7,000 people go through our doors in four days. And let me tell you what else was a big hit: our mayor. He was onstage, and he presented to nearly 1,000 military men and women who came to see the show. His remarks were both moving and inspiring. Thank you, Mayor. And now the Cabrillo updates. As you mentioned, Cabrillo and its president, Moa, have the privilege of being named a national finalist for the 2010 Creative Director of the Year Award from the National Spotlight Award Company. And from a field of 600, we're one of six national finalists. So on March 8th, I'll be trotting down that red carpet in Las Vegas, representing Cabrillo and Thousand Oaks in all our glory. So keep your fingers crossed, and by the way, since the finalist that will be awarded, the number-one spot, is a People's Choice Award, you still have time to vote if you go to CabrilloMusicTheater.com. On another national front, Cabrillo is making a heartfelt effort to help the earthquake victims in Haiti by being a part of the Pasadena Playhouse Benefit Concert for Haiti. The concert is February 1st. In addition, if you go to the Cabrillo website, you can donate to the American Red Cross Haiti Relief Fund. Which brings us to our upcoming show. On February 5th, that's a Friday, we're going to set sail back to 1945 with another toe-cap premiere of "The Andrews Brothers." When a USO gig is threatened with cancellation, a certain famous trio of singing sisters fail to show, it's left to three talented brothers to go on with the show. "The Andrews Brothers" is a hilarious musical comedy that will have you laughing in the aisles. With more than 25 unforgettable tunes made famous by the Andrews Sisters, it's a real toe-tapper. And for all those forever-Platt fans, get ready to fall in love all over again, because all the original Platts are now in our production of "The Andrews Brothers." Our star-studded, Ovation Award-winning cast will have you wishing it never ends. Our cast is a group of Broadway superstars and Cabrillo family favorites. Begins with Larry Raven. He starred on the Broadway production of "The Producers," in the lead role of Leo Bloom, made famous by Larry and that other actor, Matthew Broderick. Our beloved David Engel, who recently starred in Cabrillo's "White Christmas," has appeared on Broadway opposite Carol Burnett. He's a six-time Ovation Award winner, including Cabrillo's "Singing in the Rain." And Stan Chandler, another enormously gifted performer. He appeared on Broadway and cabaret starring with Joel Grey. Among other places, Stan has performed in concert at Disney Hall with the California Philharmonic. And our leading lady, Darcie Roberts, is another blazing star who performed on Broadway in "Crazy for You" and "Curtains." Add to that mix our three-time Ovation Award-winning director, Nick DeGruccio, Ovation Award nominee choreographer Roger Castellano, and three-time Drama Log Award-winning musical director, Lloyd Cooper, and it adds up to an off-the-chart blockbuster hit musical. I'd also like to note that we have a big outreach program with our show, and we're doing it in cooperation with the Disabled Veterans Association. Expect to see loads of our war heroes at the show. We're also offering all Thousand Oaks veterans a free balcony ticket for every ticket they purchase. The lobby will feature a sentimental display of veteran memorabilia loaned to us by our local residents, some of whom have pieces going all the way back to World War II. Tickets start at $25 for the new '40s musical. You can purchase tickets at the box office. You can call Ticketmaster, 800-745-3000, or go to Ticketmaster.com. So please join me in welcoming our three singing brothers, Larry Raven, David Engel, and Stan Chandler, and on the piano, our musical director Lloyd Cooper. And oh, yes, after you get a glimpse of this slapstick musical, please enjoy some patriotic cupcakes that'll be in the lobby.
Would the clerk please call? Item six, public comment.
This is the time and place for public comments, and speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All speakers for public hearings shall be called and heard during the public hearing. Pursuant to council standards of operation, the mayor may assist any speaker from strain into areas not within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Under state law, issues discussed under public comments can have no action unless listed on the agenda, and may be referred to the city manager for administrative action or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. All documents for city council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking, and speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Three people have presented cards and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you very much. Our first speaker will be Debbie Gregory. Debbie, the second speaker, if you'd like to come down and get ready, will be Sharon Good evening, ladies.
Evening. Good evening, Mayor Gillette, council members, and Thousand Oaks residents. My name is Elaine Hollifield, and my lovely cohort is Debbie Gregory, whom you introduced. We're proud board members of the National Association of Women Business Owners of Ventura County, or NAWBO VC. Power to Business, that's our motto these days, and it's the theme of our conference that we'd like to invite you to. The Power to Business Conference is being held on Tuesday, February 9th, at the Amgen headquarters, right here in Thousand Oaks. It's going to be a fantastic event. It's a unique all-day conference designed for all business owners who want access to powerful tools, information, and corporate networking opportunities. Major corporations participating are Amgen, Pfizer, IBM, and Union Bank. And now Debbie loves our conference sponsors so much, she'd like to tell you about them. Right. Thank you. Elaine. We have some wonderful sponsors, of course, Amgen, who's hosting the event as a major sponsor in this, and they're a company that values diversity supply and diversity employment. We've got Anthem Blue Cross, Metropolitan Water, Ventura County Star, IBM, ISM Supplier Division Pharma, and Technical and Operational Solutions. And we thank all of them, and we invite other sponsors to join in. There'll be 250 to 300 business owners, and it's a wonderful audience to put your company in front of. And I'll return to you. Okay. Panel topics will include secure your infrastructure and prevent identity theft, powerful advantages of certification, and power up your business financing. We're also excited because Anna Riccio Harvey, Director of the SBA's Office, a women's business ownership in Washington, DC, will be one of our highlighted speakers. Also slated are renowned keynote speakers, David Allen, international lecturer and world's leading authority on personal and organizational productivity, and Jim Cathcart, celebrated author and award-winning motivational speaker, who is also in the Speaker Hall of Fame. To register, visit NAWBOVC.org, that's N-A-W-B-O-V-C dot org, and be one of the first 100 people to register, and you'll receive a gift, a free gift, David Allen's nationwide-based, worldwide bestseller, Getting Things Done. So don't forget, February 9th, Power to Business Conference here in Thousand Oaks at Amgen Headquarters. Thank you.
Ladies, would you like to repeat that website, that address, again, please?
Sure. Thanks.
And it was NAWBO, National?
National Association of Women Business Owners. It's N-A-W, B as in boy, O-V-C for VenturaCounty.org.
Very good. Good luck. Sharon McMahon, followed by Ryan Van Omerman. Good evening.
Hello, Mayor Gillette and council members. I'm Sharon McMahon. Many of you know me. I live in the city of Thousand Oaks. I'm here tonight to support the idea of bike lanes on Lynn Road. You have several items under number seven that have to do with bicycle. And the bike lanes on Lynn Road, they are part of the city master plan, or bicycle master plan. I've been on the traffic commission for 14 years. I am a member of the city's bicycle advisory team since 2005, and I am a cyclist. I started riding recreationally in a more serious way about three or so years ago, and I ride two to three times a week, around 20 miles or so each time, and I love it. And I ride all over Thousand Oaks and Newbury Park. I do not ride north of the freeway on Lynn Road, though. I'd ride with a bunch of women, and it's scary there. So when I ride, I ride, I do ride on Lynn Road on the other side of the freeway because it's wider, it does, in places, have a bike lane, and it feels safer. The cars aren't going as fast, they're not as close together. One of the other reasons that I don't ride there is because the speed limit is fast, and the traffic is heavy, and the cars, they can't change lanes to avoid a bicycle rider, and it's very frightening. If there were bike lanes on Lynn Road, it would help position the bicycle rider in a safer location on the street, not in the travel lane. It will reduce the motorist and bicycle sudden swerves and lane changing, and it can help guide bicyclists through the intersection in a predictable course. But most importantly, it sends a message to the drivers that the bicyclists belong here and be on the lookout for them. Anything we can do that makes drivers more aware of bicyclists is really important, because they need to share the road. The city's been doing some great things with their sheroes, and all the efforts that they've put towards the bicycle safety, that's awesome, and this is just one more piece of the puzzle, and I'd really like to see that it happen. Thank you.
Sharon, thank you very much. Ryan Van Omerman and Mr. Nick Kidway. Good evening, Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members, staff. Happy to be here tonight. My name is Ryan Van Omerman. It's Ryan Van Omerman. Many of you, everybody, I think, knows me from Cal Lutheran and the Chamber, but tonight, I'm here as a bicyclist. Many of you may or may not know, I cycle to bike, or cycle to work, two to four times a week, and I've been doing it for 10 years. And I live immediately next to Amgen, and cycle, of course, to California Lutheran University. And let me tell you, I've tried different bikes, I've tried different routes, and after about a couple of years on Lynn Road, I completely abandoned it. I now ride uphill crest and then get on Moore Park Road and go all the way up around Wilbur. You can kind of picture the route from there, of course, adding about a mile and a half onto my bike ride every day. And people would say, or, sorry, three miles, mile and a half each way, people would say, "Well, Ryan, you need it." And they'd probably be right, but I think the troubling aspect is, as a biker, I just feel like, or certainly I'm not a part of kind of the traffic picture on Lynn Road. The cars are too fast and too close, and not looking for bikes at all. And like I said, so I stay off of it, except for maybe a Sunday morning, something like that. So anyway, a fellow bicycle commuter said, "Hey, there's a study for Lynn Road bicycle improvements, also hill crest, also near and dear to my heart, that is on the consent calendar for this evening." And so I just am here tonight to encourage you all to adopt that and go forward with the study. I wouldn't pretend I have any answers to what a correct solution is on Lynn Road, other than to say that I believe that the bicyclist should be a part of kind of the transportation equation on that road. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ryan. Mr. Nick Kidway, followed by Kathy Carlson.
I begin in the name of God, who is most beneficial, most merciful. I am Nick Igbalkidway, resident of Newbury Park. Reason I'm laughing is I had some overhead things, and the projector is dead, so what else is new? I thought I would dedicate the three minutes to the Thousand Oaks wonderful phantom disgraceful redevelopment agency. The reason I use some of these harsh words is because I was lucky enough to be on the city's budget task force. We had 83 suggestions, and one of them was, which does not cost any money, that if people watch TO TV, I mean, I'm sorry, if they have the government channel, they watch Agora Hills or Westlake Village. All cities that are reasonable have a separate adjournment for the council, then they wear the hats and have a quorum and discuss the redevelopment agency budget, which is a serious business because it deals with property taxes, which involves the city going into debt. I was promised by a council member that she had talked with the city manager who was going to make the change, but it's disgusting that nothing good happens in this chamber, and then we are forced to keep coming back, some of us. I mean, it's, congratulations, Mayor, that you have one activist that has turned a leaf and become a businessperson, I guess. I'm a businessperson, too, but I'm not going to, hopefully, compromise because I'm an immigrant, and I just love this country and this city, and it just pains me to see it go to hell. What is redevelopment? Redevelopment is basically a tool that the government came up with after World War II because the inner cities of this wonderful country were blighted. And so they said, "If the cities or counties declare an area blighted with findings that the businesses are failing, there's too much crime there, then we will freeze the tax rates at that stage, and any new taxes that come up out because of the spending of the redevelopment agency will go to the redevelopment agency." And that was the core of it. Unfortunately, it has been abused. Our city manager, who had a PhD in finance, declared all of Thousand Oaks Boulevard, from the Oak Mall to the Janes Mall, even where the Best Buy and all that is. So all the taxes from 1979 that have increased in the value, the property taxes, they go to the redevelopment agency, and that's one of the reasons our state is in such a mess. It's a shame that no one on the council takes this issue and lets this thing ride on and destroy our state, because this money is coming from Sacramento, and it's hitting the college students, it's hitting the fire departments, it's hitting the average taxpayer. It's over $5 billion, and this is the cry of the day. Thank you very much. You were not looking, so I took advantage. I'm not talking about myself, this is about the city.
Our final speaker, Kathy Carlson. Ms. Carlson?
Good evening, everyone. Kathy Carlson, I've lived 20, almost 30 years here. I'm going to talk to you again about the city preschool. You went into partnership with the Caneo Valley School District. It is such a disaster. I talked to you about this a month ago and warned you that it is not a grant. All of that money that's being sent from Sacramento is money that's being fronted for operating expenses. And since the school is not full, they're short 56 students in the full pay, the incoming superintendent of schools, Dr. Barstead, admitted last Tuesday that they are already negative $60,000 to $70,000. And that was after the first quarter. Now we're in the third quarter. Okay? So I spoke with some of you personally. You're looking, the state, in the pot of money that the computer throws out is, that's $650,000. So I spoke to the analyst in Sacramento this afternoon again, and he said, "Yep, he's going to send a bill in July." It's going to be a pretty hefty bill. So Dr. Barstead, he said, "We're not going to pay that at the school district, we're sending it to city council. I think you need to review your contract." The contract says that the school district has to pay for any expenses. He says, "No, it's going to stick it to you." I don't even think Dr. Barstead lives in this town. Who is he going to stick it to? Us, the taxpayers. Nice. Why did you even go into this daycare business? You thought you were going to make a lot of money. If you had asked the previous owner, Sherry Laboon, she went negative four years, and she was running it very lean, because when you're a private person, you take risks. She took a risk with her husband, then she made a profit, finally, after 10 years, she was making a profit. The way these clowns are running it, they've already got, three people came, four people came to talk at school board last week, three are going to lawyer up and sue for racial discrimination, segregation of the children, Title 22 violations, not giving milk, violations between what is posted on the menu and what is served, it's not the same. And witnesses are keeping track. And so the school district goes to the director, "Oh, is everything okay?" "Oh, yeah, everything's okay," she says. What do you think she's going to say? "All right, I think you should get out of this partnership before it costs taxpayers much more money, but you will get a bill because you're already obligated." So next month, some of these parents, they're Hispanic, they need a translator, they didn't have a translator tonight, but they're going to come and talk to you and tell you about the low quality of childcare over there, and how they're being abused, and they're being told not to report it to the state. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment section. Move to item seven, consent calendar. And I have Mr. Nick Kidway, items A, C, and F, I believe.
Good evening, Mayor, Nick Kidway, resident of Newbury Park, representing concerned citizens in Thousand Oaks. Very quickly, on the minutes, I'm waiting for the day when sunshine will come back on the minutes of the city, and you will join the list of civilized nations that have minutes that explain, and that can be used in court, even. I mean, the mention of the school board was denied. I mean, they at least explained what people said, but then they give us citizens number one, citizen number two, citizen number three in the minutes. At least you folks put the names there. Number C, revenue reduction, even F, that I want to talk about, the TO pass agreement, and if I might just say two words about the road bike lane. All these really do not belong in the consent calendar. I mean, I've been saying this for a year. I mean, I don't know why we can't have good I mean, I don't know why we can't have good government. I mean, these are rules that I have not made, these are the rules that the founders of the country and this city have done, is that consent calendar is item for routine items. It just says in your, over here. It's not for debatable, it's to give, I mean, one of the main purposes of the meeting is, like the bike lane thing, is to let the public know of the changes that are happening. And these items do not belong over here. The theaters fund is asking, you are going to, on a voice mode, without any discussion, give thirty-seven thousand dollars to the beautiful Bernadette Peters Alliance for the Arts Gala, and twenty thousand dollars for Cabrio. They were over here, good performance, but no mention. I mean, the mayor brags about, I mean, there was, the city, the fathers said that we need a place under the sun, we need a downtown. But also, they said, without any taxpayer funds. That's a big thing. And to steal from people's hard-earned money, especially in this economy, in the way that you folks do, without discussion, without going to the public and saying, "Hey, we built this, we, arts is around the whole world." I mean, you don't make money, there's a few people like Bernadette Peters that get rich, but most of the people do not make money. And let us subsidize it, rather than, I mean, that's what I don't like. I mean, that's what people don't like. I mean, I will end, I mean, because there's not enough time. About the T.O.P.A.S. agreement, it's a shame that even council members do not know about the, about this, is that when the, when the redevelopment agencies came about and took away, the city, the state took away the educational augmentation funds, the city agreed and started giving the T.O.P.A.S. agreement, which is about three million dollars every year or something like that. And, but the state came back, so the city, the state gives the ERF money back to the Caneo Valley Unified District, so they get a double dip. This is better than the right aid, double dip. Mayor, that used to be a nickel, this is a double dip for the, for us, for our students.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm going a little over, but I mean, this is, there's hardly anyone speaking here.
Thank you. Okay. Consent calendar, consent calendar. Pleasure of the council. Dr. Glancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move the consent calendar.
Move. Discussion of the motion. Please vote.
Motion carries four zero. Councilmember Bill Daley, pinny absent.
Okay, we'll move to item eight, eight A. Would the clerk please open the hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider, gen. item eight A, municipal code amendment, adding COSCA manager to list of designated enforcement officers and adopting regulations prohibiting encroachments onto certain publicly-owned land, M.C.A. two thousand nine, D. F. seven oh two two eight. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. All documents should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking, and speakers are requested to name, state their name and community of residence for the record. One person has presented a speaker card, and that speaker will be allowed five minutes.
Thank you very much. Staff report, Mr. Ware.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight before you is municipal code amendment two thousand nine, seven oh two two eight, regarding encroachments onto city-owned land and other public lands.
Excuse me, Jeff, could you get a little closer to the microphone? Your voice is soft.
Absolutely. They sort of, my chair, there you go. How's that?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. It should be noted that a revised ordinance was placed in your supplemental information tonight. The revision is to the title of the ordinance and one word changed. Changed nothing else. I believe there's also an email from one citizen also in your supplemental this evening. This amendment is twofold. The first is to add the position of COSCA manager to the list of authorized enforcement officers, and secondly, to add section five dash eight point one one to the municipal code, establishing prohibitions for unauthorized encroachments onto city-owned land or land owned under the authority of a joint powers agreement that the city would be a party The City of Thousand Oaks, its redevelopment agency and COSCA maintain an excess of eleven thousand acres of land in the city. Some of this land is dedicated to open space or is being maintained for future or other uses. On occasion, the concerns, on occasion, concerns are received by the city that unauthorized encroachments are occurring on these lands, ranging from construction, modification of land in some way, or persons storing materials on the land without permission. Presently, both the Caneo Recreation and Park District and COSCA have adopted specific regulations prohibiting unauthorized encroachments onto land under their ownership. The city does not currently have such a regulation in the municipal code to cover such activity. Based on the need to have a similar ordinance than the ones adopted by both CRPD and COSCA, the city council initiated this amendment on July twenty-first, two thousand nine. Part one of the ordinance adds the position of COSCA manager to the list of enforcement officers formerly authorized to enforce portions of the municipal code. COSCA rangers are currently on this list. As the manager, as manager of COSCA, staff believes that this position should also have the authority, as presently provided to the COSCA rangers, to be able to formally take enforcement action that may be required for land management, for the land managed by the city division. COSCA does provide some management of city-owned open space, primarily on land with existing trails and land pending transfer from the city to COSCA. One other minor change under this section is the changing of code enforcement officer to code compliance officer to reflect a change in this position's title made many years Part two of the proposed amendment would adopt regulations for the prohibition of unauthorized encroachments onto land owned by the city, the city's redevelopment agency, or land under the authority of a joint powers authority, such as COSCA, in which the city is a party. As stated previously, similar regulations have been adopted by CRPD and COSCA, but these do not cover land presently under the specific ownership of the city. By adopting this amendment, there will be a standard in the municipal code dealing specifically with unauthorized encroachments, providing for clear notice to the public regarding this issue, and providing an ordinance that can be utilized for enforcement when needed. Encroachments onto city-owned land is a concern due to added liability to the city and costs associated with increased maintenance and brush clearance. The proposed ordinance establishes specific activity that would be considered and prohibited encroachments, including land physical alteration, excuse me, I sort of missed that a little, but discharges of materials in construction of physical improvements. Staff authorized to force this section, if adopted, will still emphasize obtaining voluntary cooperation, resolving concerns regarding unauthorized encroachments. Landowners involved with such encroachments will be contacted, notifying them of the conditions, and attempts will be made to have the encroachments resolved in a cooperative manner. If voluntary cooperation cannot be achieved, the more traditional methods of enforcement would be able to be used, including criminal complaint, civil action, or administrative penalty. One other benefit of this amendment would be to extend these options, particularly the use of civil penalties to land under COSCA, which is not available under the COSCA ordinance currently. Staff recommends introduction of this ordinance this evening and available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ware. Questions of Mr. Ware, staff? Mrs. Irwin?
Thank you for that, Mr. Ware. One of the things that's not in the report, just a comment, is that I liken in the report that we have that we talk about flexibility in dealing with these issues, and I think we need to really make sure, because of what we've had a couple of months ago, that we emphasize that the city is going to be flexible in dealing with these encroachments. And then the other question I have, or that was a comment, here's the question. In the packet, there is a, an email from Mr. Hicks. Not sure if you read it, but I was wondering if you could comment on that. He was talking about the obligation that public land not encroached on private property due to erosion or invasive native plant life. And I'm sure he's listening and he would like to make sure that that was considered.
I did review the memo briefly this afternoon. As far, as far as the, during the planning process, when these open space areas are set up, and particularly that, they're set for a particular reason, both providing open spaces available to the public a lot of times, and also maintaining brush clearance and having appropriate plantings on those things to, for fire reduction, and to maintain a natural state as it was intended to do. As far as the liability going both ways, you know, it's, we hope that the open space land is maintained in a proper way. And if not, it should be, you know, also can be reported to us for, or the COSCA group for maintenance concerns that they could look into. But I don't have any other comments other than that specifically to this.
That's good enough. Thank you.
Additional questions of staff? Mr. Ware, I was just going to, as a point of clarification, on your PowerPoint at the front, you reference the redevelopment, the city redevelopment agency, COSCA, and an inventory of eleven thousand acres. Sometimes that's confusing because we're, we're very proud of the fact that there's a much larger amount of total open space in the inventory, some owned separately by the city, some owned by the park district. A gross amount is almost close to sixteen thousand acres. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. The difference is land that's owned by either other public agencies other than the city, COSCA and CRPD, and/or private entities such as homeowners associations that's classified as open space. National Park Service is a good example. Rancho Sierra Vista itself is about a thousand acres, maybe a little more, and that's in our planning area, and that's open space, but it's not owned by the city, COSCA, or CRPD.
Okay, I appreciate that, John. I just say when we talk about it, we talk, we should mention the gross amount and then break it down specifically which, which pieces we're talking about, because someone might say, "Wait a minute, last, some time ago, you had close sixteen thousand acres. What happened to that other side?" Point of reference. Okay, no further questions of staff. We have one speaker on this item, Mr. Nick Kidway. Mr. Kidway? And clerk, Mr. Kidway has five minutes? Five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Gillette. Nick Kidway, representing Concerned Cities in Thousand Oaks. Glad you mentioned the five-minute thing. I mean, it's ten years or fifteen years ago that the former mayor changed the rule so that reports are three minutes. And you really need five minutes, I mean, for civilized discussion, and if you really want to talk seriously. And you are, I mean, there's no citizens coming anywhere, and so maybe you should go back to five minutes so that people can vent and come back, rather than just watch, you know, Kobe in Bernadette Peters. I guess that's good. It sounds very good, but first of all, I would like to thank Jeff, Mr. Jeff Ware. He is really a great employee and a great manager. I don't need to say a good word for John Prescott, because he walked my streets thirty years ago as a point man for the city. We all had dark, black hair, and he got the SNS home approved, and so that's why he's sitting in the driver's seat. But this ordinance raises questions, and I'm very disappointed that the name Fred Rasuli has not been mentioned in this chamber, even though it has garnered a lot of ink at the Ventura County Star, and some people would say, "Well, it's dead." My friend owned a home on Peppermint Street where McPherson also lives, and there's very nice open space behind. But he was required, and this was in the eighties, and I'm, I know it is true of a lot of people, that he didn't own the land, it belonged to COSCA or whatever, but he had to hire somebody to trim the weeds, and one year he did not do it, and he got threatening letters just about to the point where they were going to put a lien on his property. I mean, these are the things that people have been doing for a long time, helping out the city, and for you to come up with, like the Thousand Oaks couple, I mentioned Fred Rasuli, the COSCA people came out with a hatchet, with a vengeance. This brings the image of an officious government person saying, "We can take care of your, we cannot take care of this problem because we have no money in the budget, but it is our job, and you are forbidden yourself to take care of it for us." This attitude is more common at various government levels. The Caneo Open Space Agency is just playing by those rules, but they are not just rules, Mayor. It is not too late for some common sense. I mean, that's one of the reasons that drove me to this chamber so many times, is that the lack of common sense in this great land. I have always been under the impression that the intent of the Caneo Open Space Agency was to keep open space land from being developed into housing cracks. But in the case of the Rasulis, the backyard encroachment turned into a nightmare. After thirty years that this couple maintained this, and he's a retired Navy officer, why would COSCA go to this point and ask them to remove all the nice trees and shrubs? Why has there been no investigation about this officer who exercised negligence and harassed these people in their retirement years? Is any council member going to ask that some action be taken? How ridiculous it is that a beautiful area was supposed to be under the direction of COSCA made to barren wasteland. COSCA should get the two thousand and eight award for utter disregard for the proper and reasonable conservation of open space in the Caneo. The COSCA investigator needs to go back to school to learn how to assess improvements and violators. I applaud the Rasulis for being proactive and taking care of the flood-prone barren land and making a safe and clear space for all residents in the Caneo. I've taken the liberty of reading letters that have been written to the Star, easier than writing a speech. A lot of times, the action is what really counts, and you might have a good ordinance, but if you don't do it correctly, if you have managers that are not doing their job properly, the Rasulis were rescued thanks to the Star. That's the only reason. But how many times can the Star run stories? It's your job, and I'm disappointed that nobody in the council has done anything about this rampant manager and the action that was taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff response to any additional comment from staff or support? And the city manager has a comment also. Mr. Prescott?
Well, I was only going to say that the comments related to the Rasuli matter are really old news. That has been successfully resolved to the satisfaction of both parties. What we had there was an encroachment on public property by a private owner adjacent, and we have worked out with them some limits on that and some resolution of it, and they're, both parties are very satisfied. So that's the kind of thing that does need to be dealt with. And as was pointed out earlier, this ordinance will help give us the tools where we're dealing with city-owned property, redevelopment agency-owned property, other property that the city is a party to, that's really public trust. And those are my only comments.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott. Did you have additional comment, Mr. Metnick, or did that, please, go ahead?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yes, that did cover it. But what we will do is, we'll follow up with Mr. Kidway and share with him what the outcome was, as we did do a memo to council with the outcome. So it was properly dealt with. Thank you.
Thank you. I have to mention, we have in the audience tonight a group of scouts monitoring the proceeding, and I assume they're satisfying a merit badge requirement or something in government. You hear reference to the small turnout in the council chambers, which happens, it's a rainy, cold night and what have you, but these meetings are televised, and from the information we receive, that television viewing audience within the city, on regular occasions exceeds over ten thousand people. So they, there is, in that particular instance, there is a much larger audience than what you see around you this evening. There being no further comment at this time, I'll close the public hearing, staff, council discussion. Dr. Glancy?
Salut. You know, if it's okay, I, I'm prepared to make a motion at this time.
Go.
Okay. I'd like to comment first that recently, the technology was available to view our open space parcels, and it also allowed us to view encroachments on our open space parcels. We have to remember that the open space is for the enjoyment of all our residents, not just a couple of people that live close by and want to convert it. There are certain legal issues, liability issues, that is, that are involved in people encroaching on our open space. encroaching on our open space. So I think with that in mind, I think the compliment staff for coming up with a great code amendment, and it's my pleasure to move staff recommendation.
Thank you. We have a motion, comments to the motion. Mrs. Irwin?
I'm sir.
Okay, there being no additional comments. I have a comment. I mentioned before the, the gross amount of public open space in this community. We have a total city area of, Mr. Prescott, correct me if I'm wrong, approximately 55 square miles, the city of Thousand Oaks, and close to one-third of that 55 square miles is in publicly held open space. That's in perpetuity. That means that it will not be developed, will not be built on, and it's held there for the enjoyment, recreation, and value to the residents of this community. Maker of the motion, additional comment? There being none, please vote.
The motion carries four zero, and the title of the ordinance is an ordinance amending section 1-5.08 of chapter five of title one of the code regarding enforcement officers and adding section 5-8.11 of chapter eight of title five regarding encroachments onto public lands.
Thank you very much. Would the, we'll move to item 8B. Would the clerk please open the public hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider agenda item 8B, user fee for tree pruning permits. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. We have one speaker, and that speaker is allowed five minutes.
Okay, I don't have a card on, a speaker card for 8B. I had one for 8A, but not 8B, so.
I'm sorry, I apologize. There's no speakers.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Ware, you've got this one.
Number two. All right, this item is a request to adopt an application fee for tree pruning permits. In November 2009, the city council adopted an ordinance establishing tree pruning permits for properties having approved landscape plans as part of their development approval. In the ordinance, a permit process was established for requests of pruning trees in excess of 25% of its canopy or foliage. The 25% standard is, is the standard established by the landscape industry and was adopted through the municipal code as part of our standards. As part of the adopted amendment, the community development department was authorized to collect a fee to cover the costs of staff time necessary to process this type of application. This resolution would adopt this fee as authorized. The proposed fee is set at full cost recovery based on the time estimates shown in attachment two on page 17 of your packet. Staff recommends adoption of this resolution and is available for any questions.
Any questions of staff? We have no speaker cards at this time. I'll close the public hearing. Council discussion. Dr. Glancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, new staff recommendation.
Comments to the motion? There being none, please vote.
Motion carries four zero.
Item nine, department reports. Nine A, financial results fiscal year ended June 30th. Mr. John Adams, finance director. Need a minute, John?
Um, no, we're, we're getting up the PowerPoint right now.
All right.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor and city council members. Tonight, let's get it up. I will be, I will be presenting the fiscal, fiscal year 2008, 2009 financial results for the city. I will talk a little about various component units. I will also cover mainly the general fund since that is the chief operating fund for the city. Just sort of a recap, our fiscal year is from July 1st to June 30th of every year for fiscal year 2008, 2009. Couple highlights as far as dates. During the fiscal year, we had four audit finance committees. As you know, two of the council members are assigned as part of the audit committee. Two of those meetings were directly with the auditors as part of new requirements for auditing standards, and two of them were talking about results for the fiscal year. Field work happens twice a year by the external auditors, one in May, out for a week, and then one in September. The auditor's opinion is dated 11/13, in which it's an unqualified opinion, which is a clean audit. Distribution of financial reports were made December 17th to city council. I will, you're very familiar with our budget. There are several things that we do from a financial reporting aspect. One is our goal setting, and so we do prepare goals and objectives every year. The other thing that we do is prepare the actual budget, which is a very large document that talks about how we're going to spend our resources. What I'm going to talk about tonight are the actual financial results for fiscal year 2008, 2009. The list of reports that are in front of you were provided in December. The first one is the comprehensive annual financial report. We commonly refer to that as the CAFR. That is the main financial report for the city. Investors would use this in buying our bonds. This is really the standard in which government agencies are viewed as far as their financial strength. Our component unit financial report, which we refer to as the COFER, is for the redevelopment agency. We do have a redevelopment agency, which is a separate entity, and we have to provide financial reports for that agency. Part of that reporting also includes an annual report to the state for the RDA, and so that's the state controller's annual report. Also, as some discussion happened earlier, the city is in a joint powers agreement with CRPD, and that agency is called COSCA, and we prepare financial reports for COSCA as well. The other ones, preschool child development program audit report, we do receive a grant from the federal government, actually from the state, for the child agent, the childcare center. Federal single audit, the city receives millions of dollars from the federal agencies, in which we're supposed to provide an annual audit report on those expenditures. And finally, development impact fees. This evening, I will be covering briefly government-wide results, which will be mainly focusing in the CAFR. What I will go into some detail will be the general fund. We'll talk a little about revenues, expenditures. The city did have an operating loss for this fiscal year of 2008, 2009 of just under $1 million, and the city did have a change in fund balance, so I'll talk about that a little. I will briefly, briefly cover some of the other governmental funds, including the library and the RDA, and I will talk about our proprietary funds, which do include the wastewater, water, theaters, transportation fund, golf course fund. And so I'll briefly cover the results from those operations. Citywide, we usually talk about a $220 million budget. That does include capital for fiscal year 2009. Total revenues citywide was $170 million with total expenditures at $160 million. Just to give some, some size, from, city council is responsible for managing a very large municipal corporation. As you can tell, there are $1 billion in capital assets in which city council is responsible for. The city also has a investment portfolio, which I'm responsible for, at almost $280 million. All right, so that was citywide, government-wide. I'm going to spend a few minutes on the general fund. First of all, revenues. Revenues declined for 2009. Total revenues were $67 million. Expenditures were 70.4. That resulted in a decrease of $3.4 million in fund balance. I did talk briefly that we did have an operating loss. I will show you how I calculate that operating loss in a few slides, but the city's operating loss. And what I mean by that is, is reoccurring revenue versus reoccurring expenditures, and that was .8 million. Fund balance. Fund balance has many components. I think what's most important in this presentation is to talk about the working reserve, the 15%, which is per council policy, and then the 5% emergency reserve. Based on these two reserves and other reserves that we have, we ended with a undesignated reserve of .2 million. General fund revenues, here's just the, the brief highlights. Revenues overall decreased from the prior year at $7.8 million. Interest earnings was 3.3. Sales tax, which is our major revenue source, is 3.1 million, which was a 11% decline from prior year. License and permits, 1.2 million. Transient occupancy tax was .4 million. This is from 2.8 down to 2.4. And property transfer tax was 2 million, which was from roughly about 0.8 million down to 0.6. Next slide, and I apologize for how tiny this is, but what I summarized on the prior slide really is shown, and this is government-wide. Again, sales tax, 3.1, represents 35% of the city's revenue for the general fund. The decline was 12%, is 11.5%, but 12% rounded up. You see transient occupancy tax and so forth. At the bottom, fiscal year '08, our total revenue was 74.8 million, while in fiscal year 2009, it was 67 million, thus the decrease of 7.8 million or about 10%. Talk about sales tax being 35% of the city's general fund revenue. This shows the 10-year trend on sales tax revenues and millions. You can certainly see over the years it increased. In 2005, there was a decrease. This was when the state implemented the triple flip, so we can certainly smooth that out. But in 2006, 2007, you saw increases. The high, the highest for us was 28.8 in 2007. Since then, it has declined in 2008 to 26.8, and in 2009, 23.8. The first year of the decline was 6.5, and the second year, 11.6%. So it went from 28.8 down to 33.8. This shows, we talked about license and permits decreased 1.2% or 1.2 million. This actually slides shows at the height of 2001 where permits were about 14,000, and this is on a calendar year. In 2009, they went down to 5,000 permits issued on a calendar year basis. And of course, corresponding is the revenue. Shows you the highlights of the four major revenue sources for building and safety revenues. Again, just shows you the decline that we have come to in 2009. Okay, this slide, what's important about this slide, and you need to remember that we actually do do a two-year budget. And with a two-year budget, we are projecting revenues in the second year, almost 18 months prior to that fiscal year. Fiscal year 2008, 2009 was the second year of a two-year budget, which means that we were projecting revenues in spring of 2007, figuring that we're now in 2010. I mean, you can see that there's an 18-month period for 2008 and 2009. What I'm showing you here is, the first column is actually the projections that were done in spring of 2007 and the adopted budget that the city council adopted in June of 2007. Based on analysis from 2005, 2006, we projected $75.8 million. This is in spring of 2007. In seeing declines in that year, in 2007, 2008, we looked at the revised budget in the spring of 2008, and the city council amended the budget $4 million in fiscal year 2007, 2008, 2009. And so you can see from 75.8 down to 71.8 is the amendment that council did to the budget last July of 2008. I'm sorry, not last July, but July of 2008. As a $4 million reduction in revenue, council made $4 million in corresponding expenditure reductions in order to start the fiscal year 2008, 2009 balanced. All right. The third column is actually the financial strategic plan presentation that's, that staff provided to you last January 2009. And at that point, over a eight-month period, we saw revenue projections from 71.8 down to 68 points, 68.6 million. That's a $3.2 million decrease. That was based on January of 2009. Now, actuals are as of June 30th of 2009. We received revenues in July and August that correspond to fiscal year '08, '09. And actuals, based on the financial report, is 67 million. So you can see that when we were making projections in the spring of 2007 based on what the actuals came, we were almost, we were off 0.8 million dollars over that period of time. And so it sort of just gives you an idea that we're not just alone as far as revenues declining, but it's very difficult when you're in this type of environment trying to project revenues in a declining environment, so. Just briefly, again, very difficult to read on screen, this pretty much just summarizes the $4 million worth of reductions that were done for revenues in July of 2008. And if you look at it, it's $4 million. Those are the different areas that we projected decreases in 2008. All right, this, this table actually shows general fund revenues for fiscal year '08, '09, as well as the adopted current two-year budget. Again, first column, 60, 67 million is what the actuals were for last year. Important is that we're also showing fiscal year 2009 and 2010, I mean, 2010, 2011, and I'm showing you what the adopted budgets and revenue were for this current year and next year. Actually, this year's revenue we project under the current actuals. Unfortunately, even looking at numbers now, which we're going to be coming back to the city council in February to give you an update on this year, that might not be enough. And so we will come back in February and give you an update on 2009, 2010. But the point being here is, is when we budgeted for '09, '10, based on information last January, we thought that even the reductions that we did of $3 million in revenue projections less, that we thought we were being very conservative in our budget projections. And even that, even though actuals were lower, the current revenue budget is less than what the actuals were. Now, that's the good part. The bad part is revenues are declining worse than we had originally thought. All right, spent a lot of time on revenues, and I think that revenues as sources of funding is important in order to determine our expenditure levels. This table shows that expenditures from 2008, 2009, 2008 to 2009 actually showed a small decline, I would call it flat. But there are the major categories. Salaries and benefits actually had a, an increase of .3 million, which was less than, less than 1%. This was because the city council froze 11 positions in July of 2008, and so this is really the result of those frozen positions. Those unfunded positions really helped us maintain salaries and benefits at a very level, at a level, at level for 2009. Law enforcement had a small increase as well. Maintenance and operations did have an increase, but that increase, a lot of that is from one-time costs, specifically the CLU pool, the city's contribution. A majority of the city's contribution happened during fiscal year 2008, 2009. Capital improvements actually declined. Several projects were put on hold based on recommendations from the finance committee, and so several projects were put on hold, and, and so our capital program for the general fund was not fully spent. And then transfers did decline, and this is mainly because of the, the savings at the library or the, the cost reductions that they had to do as part of their budget reduction. So a majority of that .6 million reduction is from the library. This pie chart just shows the allocation per department or per function, and so I won't talk much about it. Certainly, police is the largest percentage at 38% and so forth. Okay. Just, just to sort of tell you, to remind you of the cuts that you made in July of 2008 to prepare us for the declines in revenues, listed here are the 11 frozen positions. prepare us for the declines in revenues, listed here are the 11 frozen positions, reduction in travel and training, workers' compensation, fixed assets, citywide fleet reduction, and postponement of the open space transfer. Next slide. The departments also came up with various M&amp;O cuts that ultimately resulted in $1.8 million reduction in expenditures, and that's the $4 million. We talked about the $4 million that we were projecting as far as a shortfall. The departments and staff came up with $4 million in reductions to at least start fiscal year 2008, 2009 off as balanced. Operating loss, general fund operating loss, I think this is really the most important thing. We talked about revenues at 67 million dollars. We have expenditures at 70.4. And the net change in fund balance, the difference is 3.4. But from that, we would look at certain one-time expenditures, things that are not reoccurring expenditures. Council policy, specifically on capital improvements, is that capital improvements are funded from reserves. And so, we do have reserves for capital projects. So, in this case, we would deduct one-time expenditures. One-time expenditures, like a grant for CLU, and that's the .8 million. And then, capital improvements of 1.8 million. So you have 2.6 million in one-time expenditures that really come from reserves, and thus the .8 million dollar operating loss. So from a reoccurring revenue versus reoccurring expenditures, reoccurring expenditures were .8 million dollars higher than revenues. This, of course, was after the $4 million worth of operating cuts. Next slide. This just shows you a five-year history. 2005, we actually had a .5 reduction in fund balance. We had three years in which we had over $3 million net change in fund balance in a positive. And then, this year, of course, 3.4 million. But you can see how revenues sort of declined in 2005, 2006, 2007. 2008 showed a slight decline, and then, of course, the drop. Now, 64.5, there's two types of revenues. One, we call other financing sources. Those are revenues coming in from other funds, and so, that's why that 64.5 doesn't match the 67, but that is included in the financing sources. Ultimately, it is a 3.4 million dollar decline in 2009. All right. Well, this graph actually shows 10 years of expenditures total, expenditures versus total revenues. You can see at the point in which expenditures actually crossed revenues in 2005, but we, for the most part, have always been in positive territory or in the black. This year, of course, 2009, you do see the blue line, 3 million, 3.4 million dollars over revenues. And so, when we come back to council in February, hopefully, we'll be able to project out 2010 and 2011. And unfortunately, that line will be going down in 2010, hopefully flattening out in 2011, which will leave the problem of trying to reduce expenditures to bring that blue line back down to the red line. I talked briefly about reserves. Again, 100% compliance with the city's reserve policy, 15% working capital, based on our calculation, equals 14.3 million, and a 5% equals 4.8. That calculation is based on the general fund and the library fund as far as expenditures, including capital. All right. Well, that covers the general fund. I'm going to briefly go through some of the other funds and try to make it quick. The first one is the library fund, financial results for fiscal year '08, '09. Library fund ultimately is, I don't want to use the word subsidized, but the general fund helps out the library fund. Library fund has its own dedicated revenues from property tax. Their operations exceed those revenues, and the city provides a transfer into the library to provide services out to two libraries. And so, total revenues, including transfers in, was 8.4. Total expenses, 8.6. And this is a decline from prior years. Redevelopment agency, total revenues, 27.2 million dollars. Total expenses, 21 million dollars. Net change in fund balance, 6.2 million dollars. Proprietary funds, these are the enterprise funds. I think we talked about the general fund. These are providing the general services. But there are several enterprises in which the city council is responsible for. We talk about them. There are the water fund, the wastewater fund, the golf course, the theaters fund, the transportation fund. And these enterprises are supposed to be run like businesses, and so, the, most of the revenue comes from user fees, and expenditures go to provide that service. And so, for the water fund, we had 8.6 million dollars in total revenues, 7.6 million in expenses with a change in fund balance. What's important here is, is that there's several different components for the water fund. There's the operations component, and then, the capital component, which also includes contributions of assets. And so, we do see a positive change in fund balance. Most of this is in the capital side and not the operation side. So I want to make that clear because of the concern about increasing water fees is mostly to cover the operations, and this positive change in fund balance is not from operations, but from the capital funds. Wastewater fund, total revenues, 22 million. Expenses, 18.1. Same thing here. There's a component of the wastewater fund that's mainly for, a component for capital improvements. That money is considered total revenue. It's used for future capital projects. Golf course fund, an area which we have some concerns, I think, looking at, you know, just the industry, the golf industry as a whole, the saturation of courses, certainly across the nation, the decline in rounds. We try to manage a very responsible public course, but in this year, total revenues, 5.6 million, with total expenses of 5.1. So, even though we're watching it very closely, we're happy to see a positive increase for the golf course. Transportation fund, more or less broke even. Total revenues of 2.8, and total expenses, 2.9. That is a loss of, or a net change in fund balance of .1 million dollars. Solid waste fund, 1.6 million in total revenues, 1.3 in expenditures, and change in fund balance of .3 million. For the theater fund, the good news on the theater fund is revenues were 4.1 and expenditures were 4.2, which was only a .1 million dollar operating loss. Their budget, projected budget in fiscal year '08, '09 was substantially higher than the 4.2 million dollars. Certain reductions were made, or money was not spent, because we do closely monitor the revenue, and the director of the theater fund certainly tried to curb expenses as much as possible. Fiscal year '09, '10, we are looking at the general fund, but the other fund that we are just as concerned with is the theater fund. I think those are really the two areas that we'll be coming back to you in February with some concerns. I think the attendance, ticket sales, everything else that you've been hearing, we are seeing that in the revenues for the theater fund. And so, hopefully, when we come back in February, can talk a little about that. The good news here, though, 1.1 million dollar loss. Again, just great managing from the, trying to manage expenditures based on current revenues coming in. All right. I'm almost complete. We talked briefly that we will be coming back in February 23rd, give you an update on the 2009, 2010 budget, at least the current year. We're hoping to give you a high-level view of the 10, 11 year. Certainly, we can say this almost every year for the last three years. Challenges that we look for at our state budget, certainly cuts and how those will impact programs. Sales tax, we continue to see declines. We're hoping in 2010, 11 that they'll flatten out, but right now, we are seeing another decline, maybe 10% in 2009, 2010. Property tax is flat this year. We don't know in 2010, 11. CPI did come out to determine 2010, 11, and it was a decline in CPI across the state of California. So that doesn't necessarily get us off in, going in the right direction. Development-related revenues continue to decline. Investment earnings, rates are low. Our investment returns have been declining. I think two years ago, we were above 4%. We're now just hovering at 2%. So we've seen some significant reductions in our interest earnings. With all these cuts, us trying to manage budget, certainly, reduction in workforce. 2009, 2010 had over 34 unfunded positions. I'm certainly, that is showing in our service levels, and so, we also have the challenge of reduced service levels. For fiscal year 2009, 10 budget, we, this is the calendar. Finance staff has started analysis. We're pretty close to finalizing that analysis on revenues. We did have a finance audit committee meeting on January 11th, which we discussed, talking about these results. On January 12th, we reactivated the bag, which is the employee group. We had a meeting with them on January 12th. We also met with the bargaining units and made a presentation to them on the financial conditions for 2008, 2009. We will do that for the 2009, 2010 in February, I believe it's February 18th. Finance and city manager will be meeting on Friday to talk about revenue projections for 2009, 2010. That presentation will be provided to the executive team on the second of February. We will be meeting again with the finance audit committee on the 8th, which is two Mondays from now, and then, we'll be back to you on February 23rd. Fiscal year 10, 11, staffs right now would like to focus on 2009, 10, get a good footing on where we feel that we will be at the end of this fiscal year. Fiscal year 10, 11 will require a lot more projection, a lot more analysis to try to project out what will happen six months from now. And so, staff, once we get through the 2009, 2010 analysis, staff will start working on that. We will hopefully provide you an update at the goal setting on where our analysis looks at, where our analysis and our projections, where we forecast those at. We come to the executive team towards the end of March. Gap closing strategies by departments will probably transpire during April. We will have a meeting with the audit finance committee the first week of May, and then, we will be back in May for you to adopt a revised fiscal year 10, 11 budget. Currently, you do have a budget that's been adopted and will be appropriated July 1st, but we, we will probably be back asking or projecting revenue reductions and recommending department cuts to the council to ensure that we start fiscal year 2010, 2011 with a balanced budget. And with that, I open, I'm done and open for questions.
Thank you, John. Extremely well done. Questions of staff? Let's start with Mr. Fox.
Thanks, John. Nice presentation. Let me just start with a historical perspective. I don't know if either you or Ms. Hong might be the person to answer this, is that I note that when you combine police with the general employees, it's around 78% of our total budget is salary. How does that compare to, say, five years ago?
The police budget, even five, six, seven years ago, was only 25% of the entire general fund. And I think as our revenues contracted, it's become a bigger percentage. It's also had pretty big increases compared to where our employee increases have been as well. So the combination of the two has caused it to be a greater percentage of the general fund.
I think it's fair to say that salary and benefits and public safety, on average, are between 75 and 80% of the general fund.
Pretty much constant? Because I don't remember, I was trying to think back, like, say, 10 years ago, and it, you know, I think it was somewhere in the mid-70s. I don't know.
Yeah.
I think, I think it was lower. I mean, I know that the police part was lower.
Yeah, okay. And I guess that would make my question, we're freezing positions, but we're not eliminating positions. That's a distinction. Is that correct? So while there's budget savings, in terms of we're not paying salaries, the positions are still on the books?
The positions are there, but there's no funding attached to them.
And then, when you combine that with additional police positions, I guess what I'm looking at is a, is it the intent of the city to fund these non-sworn positions when the budget gets better? Why would we keep them?
I will, yeah. Originally, the hope was that this is not, that revenues would rebound, but I think that as we have seen several years, and based on all the analysis that we do, we're going to be starting with a new base as far as revenues. So there is an argument, as I think you're going to, is when we come back to you, is these positions may not necessarily...
Yeah, you know, when you look at your own projections that you're giving us, there's a downward trend, and I think when you look at what's happening, certainly across the state, and I just happened to sit through the budget hearings out in Los Angeles, same projections. It's interesting how the city staff there and the city staff here, and probably city staffs across California are finding the same things, is that they're not looking for any upturn for probably three to four years at the best, and then, because local government is always the last to recover, if you notice the housing markets, we're actually getting a bit of a bump in, in housing costs in terms of what they're worth, but we're the last to do that. So all that to say, you know, I'm going to be looking at total positions, and if we're planning on keeping those around, or if we have to look at, you know, just operating with less people. Not necessarily unfunded positions, but less positions.
I think it's going to become the new normal to have less staff and try to figure out how to work that way.
Okay. Then, let me move to the, I guess it's page 17, or slide 17 in your handout. That's the graph?
Yes.
One of the things I want to suggest, and we had this conversation when we had the fire services reports, and it was, the question was asked, I think, by a number of members of the community, and I think given the council was asking staff questions, how did we get so far out of balance? And I note here that all the city departments are included except fire, and that's because we're part of the district, but as a percent of the total city budget, we are actually paying more for fire than we are for police. But you wouldn't know that, because it's not included. So what I'd like to suggest maybe to you, Mr. Mitnick, is moving forward every two years, and certainly at the mid-year, that staff, in fact, I'm not going to ask, I'm going to direct with the concurrence of the council, that you include our expenditure of fire services based on the formula that we're currently using, which is the formula that the fire service use. Notwithstanding, we're still going to work through that issue, but I think as a two-year budget exercise, council, future councils can take a look at how much we're expending for fire services. If we don't do that, it remains silent unless a council member or the staff asks for a report on how much we're spending on fire services.
Can I just ask for a clarification?
Sure.
Are you looking for that number to be the revenue that is secured from the city of Thousand Oaks through property tax? Or are you looking for the expenditure number that...
I think it needs to be both. I think you need to...
Okay, so you want to see both the revenue and then the expenditure?
Right. I think council needs to see the whole, the whole piece, so to speak, as it relates to the, the cost of fire protection, as it relates to the whole city budget, so to speak. And recognizing that it's a little bit different because it's not a department of the city, but I think, I'm just thinking through how, on a regular periodic basis, I know we agreed that we were going to do that every five years, have a review, but I think, I think looking at it from that perspective might, may be helpful. Unless there's an objection, I'd like to ask staff to do that.
Could I, could I ask you, Mr. Fox, to consider, and that same, we'll deal with it at the same time, that we also include another very significant expenditure within the community that I think, so that we all know what kind of numbers, is the Canal Recreation and Park District? Because we do not have included in our budget Recreation and Park Services.
Right.
Yet the taxpayers of the region, even though the district... Yet the taxpayers of the region, even though the district's slightly larger than the city, I think it's one of those, I think it's one of those public expenditures that we really need to know.
Okay.
And whatever format you choose, if it's footnote or whatever it is, but exactly, so that we truly know where is the community's money going to pay for services?
Yeah, and that's really getting to the issue, is how much are we taking in? How much are we spending? And what are we spending it on? I think that's what, certainly the council and the public needs to know.
All right, let me, is there, is that, do we have concurrence? Okay, all right.
Okay. Now, also looking at the pie chart, I note that community development is approximately twelve percent of the general fund allocation, and I'm assuming that's for two thousand nine?
Yes, two thousand nine, two thousand...
Okay. I'm just curious what it was in two thousand one? Because if you move back to slide eleven, building permits were running just a little under fifteen thousand in two thousand one. They look like they're running about seven thousand, six thousand now. So we have, you know, less, more than a fifty percent decrease. Just curious what the staffing was for community development.
Yeah, I won't, let me, let me try. I understand the question. I can't tell you what the expenditure was in community development. But what I can do is look at the budget. And community development is unique compared to public works or finance in that we're not, community development, ninety percent, eighty to ninety percent of their budget is personnel costs, salaries and benefits. This year, I think it's ninety, ten. So they don't have a lot of MNO. It's mostly personnel, salary and benefits. And in looking at the budget for two thousand eight, two thousand nine, staffing levels were at seventy-three. In fiscal year, I only go back in the budget to fiscal year two thousand one, two thousand two, community development actually had seventy-nine. So from two thousand one, two thousand two, they had seventy-nine. Fiscal year oh eight, oh nine, they had seventy-three. So a reduction of six staff level. That, I can get you the change or the increase in expenditures, but...
I guess where I'm driving at is, there's another slide here, by the way, on how much we spend and how much we take in.
Right.
Okay. That's a very, very expensive department. Is that a, is that a pretty close to good assessment? I know most of that department is salary.
Ninety percent.
Ninety percent. And so I'm just, I'm just noting, very expensive department, pretty good percentage of our total, when you look at twelve percent, but the work has gone down significantly based on building permits.
Correct.
So, you know, I just think it needs to be noted to the council that, and I know that there's labor relations issues and a number of issues, but that is fairly dramatic when you look at the decrease in building permits and then as a, as a percentage of the staffing that we have in community development. I think just we need to, we need to look very hard at that. Things are getting tough, so we got to, we got to start looking at, you know, asking tough questions.
Understood.
Oh, yeah. The slide I was referencing, slide twelve, building safety revenues have dropped dramatically. Well, it's building safety, but I would imagine that is somewhat tied to building permits, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I was talking about. I guess more of a comment than a question, although I am going to ask the city manager, as it relates to the arts report that we're working on, as council will recall, the arts report recommended that cities subsidize the theater operation and look at the arts as a whole. As John indicated, we lost about a hundred thousand dollars...
Correct.
...in the theater fund. The report is recommending that the council further subsidize the theater operations or the arts as a whole, and we're clearly not going to be able to do that. So a couple of things that I think we need to look at. One is if staff is already projecting, at what point in time, if things stay the same, does council have to reevaluate how much money we're putting in or what we're doing with subsidizing? Because I think this is going to go on for a while. We're going to do the arts report, which I think has dramatically changed the landscape over the last year and a half. It's actually good that we have taken our time working our way through that report, given what we're seeing. So I guess my question would be, are you doing projections, I don't know, five years out, that if things stay the way they are, we are going to have to make some difficult decisions as it relates to the theaters? And are you prepared to at least provide the council a snapshot of what it is you're thinking?
We will be, well, we'll work on being prepared for the twenty-third. The FSP that we did, the Financial Strategic Plan, actually looked at all the major funds out ten years. But that one is one of the very difficult ones to project because of, it is an enterprise, you're looking at how many customers it's serving and everything else. What I wanted to say was that one point one million dollar change in fund balance, right now, we're fortunate that the theaters fund does have some reserves. And so when we say one point one million dollars, that's coming out of the reserves that the theater fund has. We talked about the staff report and providing support for the Alliance and Cabrillo. That is coming out of those reserves. The general fund for last two fiscal years, and these proposed two fiscal years do not propose any subsidy from the general fund. And so we, these two budget years do project some continuing losses that we hope that reserves will be enough to cover. Without knowing what the end result of the report, the arts report is, it's difficult to project what that impact will be until we see the end results and then the financials as well. So we will work on that for you for both the February presentation and the May presentation so that you know what the impact of your decisions are on the report.
Okay. Because I think without being an economist, if you just look at the material you're providing the council, we've had a drop in sales tax since, you know, two thousand seven, fairly dramatic drop. And we've had, I'm sure we've had a like drop in sales for the theaters. Even though we're doing all the things that we need to be doing, I think the theater ticket purchase is going to closely mirror the sales tax. There's just less disposable income. People are buying less. And again, not to be repetitive, but I think we need to be very conservative in looking at how long we're going to have to sustain in the environment that we're in. And these things are likely going to continue to decrease. And so that's why I asked the question. As we move forward, given the arts report and some other things that we're looking at, that we're making those projections, I certainly agree with Mr. Adams that the theaters is a difficult one. I know we looked at it in our strategic plan, but I think at this point, we have to be realistic that likely it's going to continue to decline and, you know, what would be staff's recommendation for us to deal to the theaters issue?
Understood.
I think that's the, I think that's all the questions I have. Again, good report.
Thank you.
Not necessarily great news, but I think, I'm sure Mr. Mitnick is going to make some concluding comments. I would say that comparatively to other municipal governments, other cities, we're actually in very, very good shape when you look at our reserves, our emergency fund, and we're in pretty good shape compared to other cities. So I guess my last question would be, fifteen percent is the quote-unquote industry standard?
It's a GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association, recommended best practice.
Okay.
So for larger, and this is maybe for the city of LA, in larger entities like the city of LA, San Jose, it's sometimes very difficult to match that.
Yeah, they're like running below five percent now. I mean, LA's got a lot of problems.
Yeah, county, large counties, the same thing.
Right.
It's very common.
Any thought to, and I'm glad you're seated, Mr. Mitnick, any thought to maybe raising that, given the circumstances that we're in over time, just to give the city a little more cushion? I know what the standard is, best practices, just a thought, you know, have other cities done that?
It's a great thought.
Thank you.
Yes, sure. And we do have some other reserve accounts for capital projects that kind of actually do that in a de facto sense. But sure, the council is more than welcome to increase the reserve amounts, but we do it in a de facto sense with our internal service funds, how we set money aside to replace vehicles. We have some money set aside for building replacement and maintenance. But you can absolutely do that. If you want those reserve amounts to go up, we can move in that direction. But right now, we need to balance our operating budget.
Right.
And then when the good times return, and when they do, then we can look at going down that path.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting that council does it. My sense is that's, that would certainly be a recommendation that we would get from staff, saying that it's something that we may want to think about doing, and here's how we would go about doing it. We are, again, I want to emphasize, we're in good shape, but it just occurred to me while I was listening to the report that, you know, having that extra cushion is helpful. So it's just a thought. Anyway, good job. Good job. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I was listening to Councilmember Fox and reminded me, the community budget task force years ago actually made that recommendation specific to making sure we were setting aside funds for building replacement and maintenance. So the thought has surfaced before, the downside with doing that, if you're able to do it, is you would be stockpiling money. So there is a challenge there, but I hope we can get to that point where we can do that.
Thank you. John, one quick, just very quick thing. On page thirty-five, one of your acronyms, Meeting with the Bag Employees, would you...
Brainstorming Action Group.
And would you just take a second and say, what is that? Repeat it again, please. Bag stands for?
Brainstorming Action Group. Scott often gets that one wrong, and I'm looking up at the HR director, and she's confirming. Brainstorming Action Group. In, when we were doing the two thousand nine through two thousand eleven, the current two-year budget, one of the recommendations was to go to the employees and come, and create a group of employees that represented each department in the city. Each department, each area volunteered a couple employees, met with the department, came up with department suggestions. I think the first time, it was in February of two thousand nine, roughly, right when we started the budget process. I think there was somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred recommendations. Some of those were implemented, some are more long-term. So the bag was reactivated, come up with additional recommendations as we go into this next year. So brainstorming action group, that is the employee group or the city employees who are coming up with ideas that management may be overlooking, because we're not necessarily in the details like the employees are.
The thought here is that some of the people that are in the best position to look for cost-saving alternatives are the people actually doing the job...
Correct.
...and recognizing in their daily routines, wait a minute, if we do this this way, okay. That's, I just wanted to clarify that.
Some great, some great recommendations from that group.
Thank you. We'll go down the other end, Mrs. Irwin.
Thank you, Mayor Gillette. I just wanted to mention that Dr. Glancy and I are on the finance audit committee, and we have spent a number of hours going over all these numbers with Mr. Adams. And you certainly took over the department at a very difficult time. I think Ms. Hong knew exactly what she was doing when she moved up. I just had one question that I don't think that we went over to in our, over on our sessions. When are the next sales tax numbers coming in, and what period do they cover?
Yes, we, well, we talked briefly on those. Actual sales tax numbers, we got the detail last Thursday. We're, I can tell you the number. We are, our current budget is twenty-three million. We are projecting at least a million-dollar decrease. That is at least at the max, it will be recommending is a twenty-two million-dollar budget. The difficulty with sales tax is that there's the triple flip that we have to account for. The state over-allocated last year, they're under-allocating this year on a cash basis. We would project on a cash basis for fiscal year oh nine, ten, twenty-one point two million. On a crude basis, which is what will be reported in the CAFR, we're projecting twenty-two million. And so we did get the numbers last Tuesday, I haven't had a chance to, or last Thursday, I haven't had a chance to write a council memo that will be going out this week. That will be part of the update that we provide to you and Dr. Glancy on the eighth, talk a little about the sales tax. We did see another decline, a double-digit decline for the third quarter. And you asked, your question was, what period of time does it cover? Sales tax covers the most recent numbers, July, August and September, which is the third quarter of two thousand nine. This is the period in which there is a cash for clunkers and some other stuff. We did see a one point five percent increase in new auto sales during that period of time, but we also saw some significant declines in other areas. So the total reduction, I believe, was about twelve percent from the prior quarter in two thousand eight. Hopefully, I covered more than you needed.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anything, okay, fine. We have one speaker card, Mr. Kidwe.
Nick Kidwe, as a representative of the power director concerned citizens, House and Senate, Mayor. It's kind of ironic that you have five minutes for kind of dumb public hearings, and we're talking about such a serious budget item, and it's three minutes, and there's no one here to speak about it, too. The problem, in my opinion, as somebody who has been watcher of the budgets for fifteen years, is that there's too much money in Thousand Oaks. And it still is true. And that's why you, council people are just itching to spend other people's money. Even now, the redevelopment agency fund has a six-million-dollar overage. And that's one of the reasons you spent three and a half million dollars down a rat hole right next door over here for additional money, additional land that was not needed. But because you had the money. And it's not your money. And it will be great, you know, ribbon-cuttings and all the things that go along with it. Sometimes, I mean, you come late to the table. I mean, I've been saying for two years that you need to cut at least twenty to twenty-five percent in selected departments. And now we have a council member talking the same thing, because it's just common sense. I came to these, used to come to these meetings, and they were eight-hour meetings. I mean, two o'clock in the morning was early going home. Same thing with the planning commission. And why are there so many people in the planning department and community department? I mean, it's disgusting. And the last mayor was just crying about, oh, we've cut staff to the bone. I mean, I'm not talking about cutting police officers or even, even essential staff. In fact, you need to make a few changes. I mean, there's an opening being advertised for assistant finance director. You do not need that. I mean, we have somebody here. I mean, look at EarthLink, look at Google. I mean, I know you cannot be like that, but you don't need to have the hierarchical frame of government and have an assistant finance director that is paid with benefits one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I mean, you don't need that. I mean, these are the kind of things, I mean, I mean, people from Amgen and Baxter are not over here. I mean, the scouts are still over here. I mean, you can't even hear what's being said. The best seat is at TBC at home, because you cannot hear because those loudspeakers still don't work. I mean, I mean, and your reports, I mean, there's so many pages. A mention was made about the ticket sales. It's a point three million dollar decrease in operating revenue resulting in a drop from performances and ticket sales. It's right on page four or five, on whatever. And the city spent a hundred thousand dollars for the founder's room. I mean, it's just disgusting. Two hundred and sixty million dollars of debt for the redevelopment agency. That's what you have accumulated. And just one last thing, Mayor, two hundred thousand dollars to pay off for this building, finally, this year. I mean, so now finally, we are getting rid of the loans. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Any further questions of staff? Mr. Mitnick, just a minute, Mr. Fox. Okay, Mr. Fox, you had a comment. I'm sorry, Mr. Mitnick.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you heard a very good... Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you heard a very good and death report by our Finance Director, John Adams, and it was many weeks, if not months, in the making to get to this point. And I just wanted to say a few things that we did get through last year, and it was not an easy process. We had to go through a series of budget cuts, and I think we had a dozen meetings with the City Council during the course of the last two years, dealing with the financial strategic plan and dealing with a $10 million hit to the General Fund. And remember, we're looking at a seven and a half million dollar state takeaway to the redevelopment agency, so we're going to be wrestling with that. But I want to take a moment to remind the council, because of this council and previous councils' vision and focus, and your support to do a financial strategic plan, which was referenced earlier, that goes back to 2002, right, Candy? So we've been at that for eight years. I can't tell you how much that plan has saved the taxpayers and this organization, the foresight, because it pointed out that we couldn't do things that we were gearing up to do, such as the expansion of the library to add staff to support that. We couldn't do it. The expansion of the Police Department, we couldn't do it. A lot of pressure about eight, 10 years ago to do enhanced retirements, pension increases, which we've been reading about and hearing about. Dozens and dozens of California municipalities jumped on that bandwagon. Due to the leadership of this council, we resisted. And that needs to be stressed. We kept our pensions low, did not do the enhancements, and therefore were not in the dire predicament that some of these other municipalities are. So that foresight has really helped. And then, over time, when we were facing the hits, we did do the necessary reductions. We have more to do. And we have, I think upwards of 50 positions now that are frozen, unfunded. Now, it's a very good question, Councilmember Fox, about, well, if it's frozen, does it come back? Well, we're going to take a good look at that when we come back in the next budget cycle. Most of those positions, I'll just come right out and say, probably will not be in there. So they will fall, fall off. They'll be just unfunded totally. But we do try to, when things get better, to take a look at positions that we had to freeze. So we're dealing with a new reality. In addition to the economy that we're wrestling with, and our local economy is not being hit as hard as many other cities, we are a built-out city. So for those employees and councilmembers who've been around for more than a decade, we were always in a growth mode, and we always had the advantage of new development coming in, and lots of money coming in, and we were adding staff, adding police officers, et cetera. Those days are over for us, and we are totally an inward-focused maintenance city, and we are struggling with that reality. And as our infrastructure ages, to deal with that becomes a huge challenge. We're trying to set aside funds to deal with an aging infrastructure, because we're not going to have new development come in to build it for us. Open space acquisition is a huge challenge for us. The open space fund, the balance is floating around $1 million. That'll go down very quickly. We have no clue how we're going to get money to acquire open space and to provide the additional park rangers that are needed to manage all the open space that we have. The tragic death last week associated with the storms illustrates why we need to have the park rangers and to be, and to be taking the management of the open space very seriously. Not to say that's because we didn't have the funding, but it illustrates the importance of that. So the working with the employee groups, the, not the Budget Action Group, but the Brainstorming Action Group, I'm sorry about that. We take all that seriously. We have very good labor-management relations. I'm proud of our employees. They are doing more with less. They are part of the solution. They're not sitting back complaining. They're coming forward with ideas, and we're implementing them. And at the same time, when we're facing all these realities, council, I want to remind you, we did receive very favorable bond ratings, and we have a standalone AA+ for the General Fund, AAA for at least the wastewater fund. So we have a lot of challenges in front of us, and it will not get any easier. But because of decisions you have made over the last several years, we're in a much better position going forward. And those are the comments I wanted to make. Thank you. John, good work.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. Mr. Fox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of comments. One included in my motion would be the inclusion of other city expenditures and revenues as it relates to our total budget. That would include fire, the Park District, and I think we ought to include the School District as well, because we do provide several million dollars per year to the School District. Again, I recognize it's not necessarily part of our budget, and staff's very parochial about these things, but I think on a regular basis, we need to, we need to take a look at just what we're taking in and what we're putting out. And we are. Because I think as times become more and more difficult and challenging, as Mr. Mitnick points out, and we've talked about this a number of times, the city has gone through the transition of a growth city to a maintenance city. We are a maintenance city now. The transition, I think, is over. Some of us have actually seen it transition. We need to take a hard look, and future councils are going to have to take a hard look at where we're spending our money. On the revenue side, I want to continue to encourage Mr. Mitnick and his staff in the era of economic development. For many years, we never talked about economic development. I think our community is recognizing that it is about jobs. It's about jobs in this community for a whole variety of reasons. And so we have to, while we're cutting travel, training, some of those issues that are the customary and ordinary cuts, cutting positions, we also need to look at the revenue side, and that is our economic development program. We need to redouble our efforts in economic development and do what we can to attract the businesses that provide the jobs that will help us through these difficult times. So my motion is to receive and file. I'd like to include in future financial reports the areas that we've discussed. And I know we get it in the council packet, but I don't know when you were planning on bringing back a report on where we are in terms of our economic development, Mr. Mitnick, but it might be timely to do that, maybe somewhere in February, where you come back with the mid-year, so to speak. So that would be the motion.
Okay. Comments to the motion? Dr. Glancy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I appreciate it.
You have a question?
No, this comment, this is the period when we can actually make comments.
Please, let's go.
Thank you very much. It's my pleasure to support the motion. I'm particularly glad that Mr. Fox made his comments about listing out what our fire expenditures are. We've been talking for about the last six months about a $6 million inequity in funds versus services, and $6 million in our budget that we're talking about certainly would go a long way. And I think it is indeed very, very important that we get our head out of the sands and just say, guys, we're not going to have a lot of development dollars coming in, as Mr. Fox said, and we are a maintenance city. And I think that not only do we need to be careful in how we spend and watch our expenses, but we have to develop revenue streams through a variety of different means, attract help and keep the businesses we have, and I think that, you know, that'll help an awful lot. But I think it's a great motion, Mr. Fox. I appreciate your comments. Let me say, Scouts, hang on for just a second. I've got one comment I want to make. I was recently at the Lee California Cities Meeting, and the director up there said that one of the first lessons in life-saving for Scouts is that you want to, by all means, maintain your own safety. So don't just blindly jump into a river after a buddy, but get something that you can help pull them out. Well, the same analogy applies to us with the state. We've got to make sure that we protect ourselves when we deal with these issues. Thank you very much for your tolerance. Mr. Mayor, thank you for your tolerance. My pleasure to support the motion.
Thank you, Dr. Glancy. Anything further? And then I would ask Mr. Fox, just to consider in his motion, the inclusion of the Fire District and Park District. I have some sensitivities to the inclusion of the School District, and the reason being that park services, recreational services, fire services are services that are traditionally provided by cities in California of 100,000 population and over. Education is not, and because of the complexity of the state funding and all of the things involved, I'm afraid there might be some misunderstandings. It's fine for us to, in our discussions, to periodically ask for that ourselves, but I wouldn't want to see it, I would be concerned about formalizing it.
You know, I think you raise a good point. So let me amend it to just include those areas that are historically fall under municipal services.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any additional comments? Please vote.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you very much. Item 9B, Civic Arts Plaza Security Bollards. Ms. Perez, you're going to do this one, or is you and Mr. Adams together? Good evening.
Good evening. This gets to be my show, and I'm going to try not to cough on you guys too much. We're here to talk about the Civic Arts Plaza Security Bollards Project, and this is a capital project, for those of you who don't know me. Let's see, I'm Elizabeth Perez, the Facilities Manager. The staff recommendation before you tonight is to authorization to solicit bids. This project is coming back after there were several comments from the December meeting when this came on consent calendar, so we're going to review the whole project for you. Just as a, set the stage, what we're talking about here is the area for security bollards at the base of the driveway leading to the turnaround by theaters and in front of the second floor of City Hall entrance. Backing up, this project has some history, so we're going to take a few years back and look at why, how this got started. Before 2005, there were many small projects around Civic Arts Plaza, and it was determined we should go ahead and get a design team to look at all these projects so they wouldn't be done as individual projects, but as one planned project. There were some needs assessments done, design teams hired, and staff came back to council with six top priorities. This was working with the Capital Facilities Committee. A design was developed just on the entry plaza as our number-one top priority, and that design, in its preliminary design, went to the Disabled Access Advisory and Appeals Board in February of 2007. This was one of the concept drawings. There were many concept drawings that the committee looked at. It was, at that point, an all pedestrian plaza. The only vehicles that we were looking at up there would be emergency vehicles or special deliveries. And since then, with budget constraints, the project was scaled down to the project that's before you today, which is merely security bollards and some lighting and cameras. During the process of these designs, there were three reports that were completed over the last several years. The first report being a physical security assessment report just on the Civic Arts Plaza. That report did identify the need to put up bollards and close the turnaround completely as a vulnerability risk. There was another security report done in 2008. This was originated by the Capital Facilities Committee, who, we looked at all city facilities, but we once again looked at Civic Arts Plaza in addition. That, again, had the same recommendation of closing the turnaround. There was also a parking study that looked at financial and operational issues of parking at Civic Arts Plaza, and a different angle looking at bollards and the turnaround was for pedestrian safety, since there is not a clear delineation between vehicles and pedestrians at this point. So project needs for the bollards are four main categories. Pedestrian safety, to eliminate unsupervised interaction between vehicles, pedestrians. This is also a problem, since there are no curbs out there, if you notice, so the distinction between vehicular areas and pedestrian areas is not clear. Maintaining building structural integrity, this is keeping vehicles off of sidewalks, which are non-rated, and those are above basement space. The hallway behind here, exit corridor, is not, is above the turnaround and needs to be protected. Building protection, the K-rated bollards, that's a rating system for crash resistance, and this will, these will stop errant vehicles and intentional attacks against the building. And to note that the building is considered, if you look at discussions with police and with the reports, a soft target, because we do not have any physical barriers between our entrances in the building currently. There were many people who participated in the project, who've had input into the design. We've had representatives from police, fire, theater staff, city managers, and city attorney's office, finance, and facilities. The proposed layout is a little small as far as the site plan, but I'll show you. These are the bollards that are being proposed in front of the entrance to City Hall on the second level. These bollards down at the bottom of the driveway are the ones that we'll discuss a little bit later here, are the pneumatic bollards that can be raised and lowered that we got Homeland Security Grant funding for. And then, based on the parking study, we have added bollards all along the edge of the turnaround, so that it makes a clear, safe path for pedestrians from the parking structure and then into the theater. There's a close-up of just the turnaround area, and you can see that we've got, these dots here represent all the bollards that would go along the edge of the turnaround and direct the pedestrians away from the vehicles. Operational issues that we looked at, when the original project looked at closing the entire turnaround, there were some concerns and comments from theater staff, so we closed it on a trial basis in 2007. Three main comments came out of that. It was inconvenient for box office, because there was a box office space in the turnaround. It was inconvenient for disabled and elderly accessing the theater during performances, and there were some inconveniences to some of the deliveries that were occurring there. So based on those comments, the turnaround was reopened at the end of 2007, just for those evening and weekend theater performances. The box office, we added two spaces specifically for box office in the third level, and all deliveries were directed to the backloading dock area. So currently, that's what we have now. It is open on, theater staff monitors it on evenings and weekends' performances, so there's disabled and elderly drop-off, and then during school bus-ins. It is accessible by appointment or prior arrangements for special deliveries, and, as I said, there are two designated box office spots now on Level 3, and it's closed all other times. So that's the current operations, and that is the operations that are proposed with this project. Going backwards with budgets, the original project that included lots of aesthetic upgrades, signage, lighting, landscaping, was $2 million. Last year, when we went through all the budget cuts and all the nice-to-haves left, we narrowed it to $400,000, which was sort of a guess at that point, just to include all the security items. $50,000 was for the hydraulic bollards only, and that was an estimate when, and we submitted for our Homeland Security Grant. Adding all the bollards at the top of the turnaround, in addition to the security bollards at the bottom and on the second floor, we figure the project is going to be anywhere from $150,000 to $300,000, which we'll bring back to you when we award the contract in another month or so. So the revised project was scaled down. It is just the bollards and the lighting, without any aesthetics, no landscaping included. There's only a minor adjustment to the center planner with the oak tree. The Homeland Security Grant we applied for in 2008, and we were awarded $50,000 for those bollards. This is no easy feat. If you, police needs to comment on that, getting through the committee. It was kind of exciting to actually get the $50,000 that they thought this was a worthy project. We are also involved in the Urban Area Security Initiative, UAWSE, through the federal government, and Thousand Oaks is listed as a regional city that can get funds for security initiatives, and so we are on that list, even though the site is not specifically called out. And the Homeland Security Grant that we have, we do need to have that purchase order in place by June 2010 to keep those funds secured. So project timeline, if it's approved tonight for award, we'll issue bids hopefully before the end of February. A month later, come back for bid/award and begin construction by May and have the project done this summer. So in conclusion, with the summary of what we're proposing, we have a custom access with these bollards, the ones at the bottom with the pneumatic controls. They can be lowered remotely through the internet. We're going to increase pedestrian safety by creating an obvious distinction between pedestrian and vehicular areas. We'll have the area clear for emergency vehicles during standard business hours, which is important, get the vehicles up here. And we'll have the crash-resistant barriers when it's unsupervised against threats. And a side note on that, you know, all the reports, the police, the consultants all agree, we're definitely not on Al Qaeda's top-10 list, but we did have a threat against the building in 2008 from someone who had a semi-tractor trailer and said he was going to drive it into the building. So even though these are people that you never even know they exist, they look at a target with lots of people, high-profile building, and they want to do nasty things to it. So there is some threats out there. So, there is some threats out there. And that's the end of the presentation. We have representatives, I think, from police, I'm not sure, fire, theaters, here to answer your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Questions of staff? Nothing? Comfortable? I have just one question. Thank you very much for that report, Ms. Perez, and I think this is one of those items that we have looked at extensively. And I understand the new shape and form and what have you, and the funding sources are very appealing given our fiscal issues that we're dealing with. The only thing I would ask you, appreciate your continuing to monitor that initial interface between exiting theater patrons and the turnaround. I was here Sunday for a performance, and again, there's a habit, habits that have been created to go around the temporary chain posts and what have you and immediately flow into the turnaround, which directly puts pedestrians interfacing with automobiles, with vehicles, a bad situation. This is a pedestrian safety issue. I appreciate all the work that's gone into trying and dress it, trying to address it, but that's one area where I think we need to continue to work out. I know you've had some suggestions and, you have some suggestions and some ideas along that line. Pleasure of the council. Dr. Glancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to compliment both staff and the Facilities Committee for modifying this project. I know it's been kind of a thorn, but I move staff's recommendation.
Thank you. Comments to the motion? There being none, please vote.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Item 10, Redevelopment Agency Report, we have none. Item 11, Committee Commission Board Reports, we have none. Item 12, Council Issues and Recommendations, follow-ups, compliance with Assembly Bill 1234, follow-up reports on meetings, conferences attended by council members. Number one, League of California Cities Transportation Committee and Public Works Policy Committee, Dr. Glancy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met on last Thursday, and it was the first meeting of the year for the group, so we did the typical first-meeting routine of review of parliamentary procedures, the strategic goals of the League for 2010, which are to protect local control and funding, support reform of structured governance, management, financing, and state government, and promote economic stimulus. Going through the rest of the just bookwork for the group, we eventually got a state budget update from Chris McKenzie, the Executive Director of the League. And as a couple of the council members have alluded to, conservative estimate is that Sacramento's woes will continue for at least four or five years, and he did bring up the illusion of the Boy Scouts Life Saving Mirror badge. There's a ballot measure, the League is sponsoring a ballot measure designed to protect local revenues, and they're currently working on signatures involved. There's also a measure seeking a constitutional convention, limited in scope, and also a group, California Forward, who has some other ideas on how to rein in Sacramento and perhaps encourage them to be a more cohesive, workable group of people. Legislative update and broadband dispersal throughout the state. It's nice to see that the state's taking an interest in that. And by and large, it was a very good, informative meeting. So, I move that we receive the report.
Motion received. Comments to the motion? There being none, please vote.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. League of California Cities Housing Community and Economic Development Policy Committee, Dr. Glancy.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. We did the usual first-meeting routine. ACED also is forming a mobile home task force, of which three of the members are me, Ventura City Councilman Carl Morehouse, and the Galita City Manager Dan Singer. And if you'll recall, Galita is the city that recently lost a lawsuit formed by a mobile home park owner with a potential liability of $25 million or so. So, it should be fairly interesting work. Went over the, again, the state budget and other legislation that's afoot, SB 375 conversation. Let's see, that was, Councilmember Strong from San Luis made a motion that because AB-32 has a loophole which allows the governor to suspend it if the state is in a fiscal emergency, he made the motion that it, we declare fiscal emergency or the governor declare a fiscal emergency and therefore put on hold the implementation of 32 and SB 375 until the state's in better financial shape. And that was one of the more interesting things that went on. But again, another good meeting, and I make the motion that we receive the report.
Thank you. Motion received. Comments to the motion? Being none, please vote.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. The final League of California Cities Public Safety Policy Committee meeting, also January 22nd in Sacramento. This was my first committee, first meeting of this committee as chair. Two points of particular interest, the League's strategic goals for this committee for 2010. One, protect local control and funding for vital local services. Two, support reform of the structured governance, management, and financing of state government. And three, promote economic stimulus, infrastructure investment, investment, business development, and job creation. A review of the summary of existing policy and guideline principles cover the areas of fire services, emergency services, law enforcement, emergency communications, interoperability, wildland, urban interface, nuisance abatement, violence, alcohol, Indian gaming, sex offenders' management, graffiti miscellaneous. I'd like to add to Dr. Glancy's comment. Sir Chris McKenzie, the Executive Director of the League of California Cities, came into each of the committees and briefed us in the two issues with AB-32, the California Global Warning, Global Warming Solutions Act, and SB 375, the California Sustainable Community Strategy and Climate Protection Act. These two are mandated activities of the legislature. They have, in each of the jurisdictions of the 58 counties across the state are requiring consolidation of such things as transportation planning and land use planning, moving these two activities together. In our county, the Ventura County Association of Governments and the Ventura Transportation Commission have gotten much closer with a, moving into a unified management system. Both of these items, which are of major significance, there are suggestions now that they be suspended. This is the first time this has surfaced, and that's being discussed because of the fiscal situation the state currently finds itself in. So, that's something that we'll all need to be very, very aware of as we move forward. That being the case, the motion is to receive my report. Comments to the motion? Please vote.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Item 13, City Manager, Mr. Mitnick, A and B.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we did hear from one of the speakers at the beginning that comments about the childcare facility. I want to remind council that the Assistant City Manager and Finance Director remain in regular contact with the operator. Things are going well out there. We have provided council with updates. We are in contact with the representatives from the state of California. They're pleased with what they see out there, and we will provide future updates as needed. And Candy, if you don't mind, if you can contact the speaker and bring her up to speed or at least share with her some of the information, the latest information. The next city council meeting is on February 9th, one public hearing, and it'll be the major item of the evening, and that has to do with the Canal Mobile Home Park closure appeal. And there's also going to be a redevelopment agency report in response to Many Mansions, one of our affordable housing providers, their short-term loan request for a project on Hillcrest that they're working on. And that's it by way of City Manager follow-up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. Item 14, City Attorney, closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and members of staff and the viewing public. Council will be going into closed session, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Chateau Holdings versus City of Thousand Oaks, case number SC 048101, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, subsection A. There will not be a need to report anything out at the end of the closed session.
Thank you, Mrs. Albano. As we move towards adjournment, I would like to, just an observation comment, an excellent budget discussion this evening, and thank you to Candace and John, Mr. Adams, and all of the folks that worked so hard to put that together. Very well done, and I think well-participated in by the entire council, so thank you very much. At this time, we're journeying in memory of two individuals. Our first adjournment is in memory of William Marks Jackson, father of Assistant City Attorney Charmaine Jackson. Mr. Jackson passed away on December 27th, 2009, at 80 years of age. He was born on the same day as Charmaine, September 12th, in New Orleans, Louisiana. He grew up as a neighbor to his future wife, Maxine Vera Jackson. They were married for 60 years and had five children. Mr. Jackson attended Xavier University in New Orleans and received an Associate of Arts degree from L.A. Metropolitan College. He retired from the County of Los Angeles in 1989 after over 30 years, where he most recently served as head of the deferred, as head of deferred compensation. He enjoyed football, crossword puzzles, and corny jokes. On behalf of the Thousand Oaks City Council, I send our deepest sympathies to the family of Mr. Jackson. Our final adjournment is in honor of Gene Briggs, father of City Employ Nancy Arieta, Nancy Arieta, Associate Analyst in our Public Works Department. Mr. Briggs was a 46-year resident of Ventura County where he and his wife Nancy raised three children. He was a World War II veteran serving in the United States Navy. While in the Navy, Mr. Briggs was light, hot, heavyweight champion, light heavyweight champion for one year, and I'm assuming that was in boxing. His experience included a degree in physics from L.A. College, racing stock cars, and working as a manager for Goodyear, and Mark C. Bloom for 40 years. His hobbies were attending his grandson's baseball and football games, golf, and researching old gold mines. On behalf of the Thousand Oaks City Council, I'd like to express our condolences to the family of Gene Briggs. There being no further business to come before us, we are adjourned.